Call this meeting to order, please stand for the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
This is the Porter County Board of Commissioners meeting for January 30th, 2018. Before we get into the consent agenda, I would like to announce a birthday today, and that's Kathy Myrtle, behind us. It's Kathy's birthday. Everybody knows you, and see, that's... So, happy birthday Kathy. So, we'll move right into the consent agenda. We got approval of minutes, January 16th, 2018, approval of payroll, January 20th, 2018, approval of claims for January 11th, January 18th, and January 25th, 2018, and the treasurer's monthly report for December 31st, 2017, so that's the year end. We also have a memorial opera house. We have a venue rental agreement that's in the consent agenda for the Shirley Hines Land Trust Group. It's a non-for-profit. So, with that, I'll open the floor to the board for the consent agenda.
Motion to approve the consent agenda.
Second. We have a motion and a second for the consent agenda as read. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Post saying sign. Motion carries. We got some announcements here. First one, I'm going to hand it over to Lord Commissioner Blaney.
We wanted to honor, we have Everett Butler here, he's right over there. He has been with the Highway Department for 40 years, and he's retiring, and I wanted to present him with a plaque and thank him for his service. And Andy, you want to tell us a bit about...
Come on forward, Andy, and grab a mic.
Good morning. Morning. Ever started July 11th, 1977, he was been a driver, a foreman, an operator. He's the longest-standing employee we've had, except Jack Jarnicky was longer. He, when he started, we had around 18 drivers. Now, we're up to 33. A lot has changed over the years. He's been an outstanding, dedicated employee for more than 40 years, and I'm very proud to have the opportunity to work with Everett.
Thank you, Andy.
Thank you.
Last time on the snowboard.
Andy, come forward, Everett. We got a plaque for you that we're gonna honor you. With a plaque and a photo. Photo on.
Oh, you're out of high school when you started. That makes you feel old. On behalf of the citizens of Porter County and the Board of Commissioners, thank you for your service and hard work, and this is just a little something for you, and I'm retiring today, so thank you very much. Here you go.
Right here. Did you get them? Let's get a real, let's get a formal one. Okay, next on the announcements, I have a prepared statement that we're going to be reading here, so hold on. The county election board has presented a two-faceted proposal that would make major changes in our county's polling locations and equipment utilized for the election process. The proposal would affect every single voter in Porter County. In reviewing these proposals, the Board of Commissioners must prioritize the impact on voters as the most important concern. The right to vote is sacred and fundamental to our democracy. It is paramount that the decision of this board protect the rights of voters as well as maintain their trust in our election process. The first facet is to consolidate voting locations, reducing the number of locations from 86 to 46. The county council and the Board of Commissioners have concerns about the selected polling locations due to availability and whether the Wi-Fi would be adequate. Also, the specifics on the public information campaign to educate the nearly 38,000 voters who will be impacted by these changes. A perfect example of that is, right now, the Porter County Expo Center is one of the ones that are on the list, and November of this year, that building will be under major construction, so I doubt if that will be a polling location for this year. It could be, it could be in the primary, but probably not in the general, which is confusing. That's just one example. The second facet is to purchase new election equipment. Again, the county council and the Board of Commissioners have concerns relating to both upfront and ongoing maintenance costs for the new equipment. Whether the equipment will result in any cost saving, such as reduction in necessary poll workers, whether the equipment will result in any cost savings, such as reduction in necessary poll workers, is undetermined at this time. There are just 11 weeks until the primary election day, and only seven weeks until early voting begins. Yet confusion and misinformation regarding this proposal remains with little time left to resolve them. Further, the new equipment would need to be ordered, delivered, and programmed with enough time to train staff workers and poll workers, all in enough time for early voting to begin in seven weeks. Lastly, this new equipment requires robust Wi-Fi at each polling location. If we approve the proposal now, we run a significant risk of voter confusion that could imperatively damage the public's perception of the integrity of our voting system. Therefore, we are returning these proposals to the election board so that they can address the concerns of the Board of Commissioners and the county council. We urge them to have their revised plans finished by fall so that they may be included as part of the 2019 budget process. In the meantime, the almost $450,000 that was encumbered by the council and the Board of Commissioners will remain available to the Voters Registration Department. This Board of Commissioners has made a concerted effort on all significant expenditures, changes to our, and changes to make sure the proper vetting, planning, and execution are accounted for. As confusion, questions, and misinformation are still prevalent, obviously not enough time was spent on planning and execution. The Board of Commissioners cannot currently support this proposal, especially right up to an election season that only opens in seven weeks. So, that's our comment, and that's our position from the Board of Commissioners. Would any of other board members like to chime in on that, or should we just move forward? That everything I would've said. Thank you. The next announcement that we have, it's our last one, we'd like to ask Dan Witt and the Vice President of the Porter County Foundation to come forward and give us a little update on how the foundation is doing and some of the things that are going on within the foundation. So, Dan, welcome.
Thank you, Jeff.
And you have the floor, sir.
Thank you very much. First of all, I appreciate your comments on the election proposals. You know, we had our county council meeting, and we left a lot of questions, and certainly that begged the question of the timeline, and it just seemed like best-case scenario, they'd be unraveling something mid to late March, early April, and that just doesn't seem to bode well for communication to voters. So, I appreciate your comments and couldn't agree more. Thank you for letting me talk, Commissioners. I just wanted to throw a couple of numbers at you, give you kind of an idea of where our foundation investment stands right, or stand right now. Often, capital cities who are investment consultants come, and they give us a very detailed and copious presentation, but sometimes the numbers get lost in the presentation, and so I wanted to just come and give you the numbers, and when they come in February, March, they can give us the graphs. So, in my conversations with capital cities, we ended, we ended 2017 with a very strong investment year. It was a bumper crop year for the county with the investments. We ended $157,872,274. That's an 11% earning for the investments, which is quite good. As you guys are fully aware, we have limitations on our equities, so in a like-and-kind equities limitation, not-for-profit comparison, we've done, we've done it very well, okay? And along that vein, we are within our plus and minus limitations on our equities and investments, so we're doing very good there. The one thing that I wanted to just touch on very quickly is, you know, 5%, according to Indiana Code 36183, I think, 5% of the earnings come into the county, so for 2017, we will have $6,785,181 coming in from the investments, the rest will go to the principal. In addition, by the way, to the $157 million, we have a little bit still left in municipal bonds, three, three and a half, I think. Don't hold me to that, but I think that's right. So, we've had, as you know, we budgeted $4.5 million of that $6.7 roughly million for operations and things that we needed for budgetary concerns, so that leaves a little over $2 million for our holding fund. And again, the rest of the earnings, minus the expense of the investments, will go back to the principal. So, we had a very, very good year, but I'm also going to address the council with this. I think that we should not gauge our outlook and spending on every year being a bumper crop year, for lack of a better term. We're going to have some downturns in the market, and Jeff, as you and I talked about, there's already been a couple of corrections in the market, you know, this year. So, I don't think we should be thinking that we've got, you know, money falling from the sky, but we're solid. What I would suggest, from all of our conversations, both with council and Commissioner members of the foundation, is that we hold the line on our budgeted money. We let our money build up in our holding fund, as we discussed, because we're going to need that for capital projects and things that we want to do, and be cognizant of the money that we're building up in the principal in the event that we have a massive downturn in the market, and we need that for operations. So, that would, of course, take 10 out of 10 votes to tap that money. So, the long and the short of it is, I'm happy to report that we had a very good year, but I say that with some degree of caution, to the extent that I don't want us to be overzealous in our spending. We've been, all 10 of us, very good at being conservative with this money, and I would encourage all of us to continue doing so.
Thanks, Dan.
Thank you very much.
I have a question.
Sure.
You know, as we spoke before, you know, one of the things that the foundation has sort of set out to do here is because, because we now are using, you know, a good portion of this money, anywhere from $3 to $4 million a year to just run county government, we've talked about keeping a reserve of about three times of that amount. So, if you can figure that if we're at a $4 million deficit, and, you know, we want to be able to, if the market sustains a loss or whatever, that we at least have three years of reserves in this money to where we can continue to run county government the way it is right now. You know, obviously, my hope is, over the years, that we can try to get rid of that $4 million deficit and try to run the county with its own money, but it is what it is right now. I know in the last couple of years, we've chipped away at that. I think at one time, when I came here, it was around $5 million, but we're still at a deficit, and when we talk about these things, I think it's a real important thing to understand that we're keeping the reserves there as a backdrop and a safety, for the operations of government. So, that's, I just wanted to clarify that.
Yeah, and I think that's a very good observation, Jeff, because, you know, philosophically, we've not had to succumb to these huge income taxes that other counties have had to deal with throughout the state. We've been able to sort of fend that off, and of course, we've had to use some of the earnings historically to do so. Right now, we're budgeting about $4.5 million, as I said. Some of that's insurance, jail medical, 911, council on aging, O E has a little bit in there, so things that we typically have prioritized as important, but it would be great if we didn't have to do that. I mean, that would be fantastic, but I think you're right. I think we need to, with respect to our holding fund, we need to get that a good three times our operations, because, think about that. Let's just say that we didn't, and let's say we had a really bad year, and let's say that one out of the 10 people on our foundation board said, "Nope, I'm never, ever, ever, ever going to use it," well, now we've got ourselves a real problem. It really would be much better if we didn't have to rely on that 10 out of 10 for emergency situations, right? So, I'm with you. I think three times would be a very safe number. That would give us a, unless we end up in, you know, Communist Russia where we're flatlined, well, then we'd be involved in elections, that'd be kind of cool. But beyond that, we would be, we can get through, I was waiting, here's some laughter. Two or three years of really bad years would be really a comfortable thing for us, and I think would be very responsible for our constituency, so I agree with you on that.
Well, as I say, the Commissioners know, and certainly you do, you know, Dan, is that the sale of our county hospital in 2007, and the way that the county has managed and invested those monies up to this time, has really allowed us not to have to consider raising our income taxes here in Porter County. As a matter of fact, most people, I don't think most of our residents realize that out of 92 counties in the state of Indiana, our income tax rate is the second lowest in the entire state, and that's, that is because of the management of those monies, how we've done that in the last 11 years.
Yeah, we've lowered the county tax rate collectively, the 10 of us, consistently, I mean, up until this year, but I mean consistently lowered that rate. So, we're a very fiscal and very solvent government here in Porter County, but yet we're building things. So, that's pretty, that's pretty cool, actually.
That's unheard of.
Yeah. So, do I get my picture with the Commissioners now, too?
Not yet. I just want to, I just want to be a picture with me, a G L one, I'll give you that. No, I just, again, I mean, we, up here, we're trying to pound home to everybody that, you know, I know there's been a lot of people that have tried to line up for this money for multiple reasons, and I think everybody probably has a good idea or a good reason for it, but at the end of the day, we're at the beginning, and I mean beginning, of establishing an endowment that will be here forever. And the hardest thing in establishing an endowment is the first five years. I mean, you can read and read and read about it, but that's what it is, and so these decisions that we're making in these five years, and we're maybe being a little conservative, and we're maybe trying to hold some folks back or whatever, we're just trying to ensure that this endowment's going to be there for a long time, and I think that's the responsibility that we've been given up here as our board, as well as the fiscal body of county government, and that's sort of how we're looking at that. And I think that, you know, until, you know, if we have record three years, and all of a sudden, the endowment just has all types of money sitting there, I think at that point in time, we're going to be able to unbridle some things and start, start touching all areas of the county and being, and being an endowment that will benefit everybody in all walks in this county. So, it's just going to take some discipline, and that's where we're at right now. We're in that discipline stage, but I think, you know, the future is bright, we're on the right track, we're on the right trajectory, and we just need to keep moving it in that way. So, that's, that's really all I wanted to follow up with. So, again, thank you, Dan.
Thanks a lot. Thanks for the opportunity.
You bet. Enough of the announcements. We're now going to move into the Commissioners' part of the board meeting. We'd like to ask Ari Sutton and Tony Bontrager to come forward. As you all know, Ari Sutton is the county's consultant that has been working with us over the last couple of years in trying to reshape and reform our county health insurance program, and I can certainly tell you, we've met with them last week to go through a lot of information, but I think, I think you're going to hear some interesting and some real positive things here, and we're excited about, we're excited about that, and that's why we put them on the agenda today to sort of give everybody a sneak peek of what's going on here. And with that, I yield the floor to you gentlemen.
Okay. Thank you very much. Good morning. I believe you have the updated, or the packet there, so.
Yep.
If you look at that first page within there, it's your current summary benefits. In that, you can see where you're currently at. You have two plans, a traditional PPO, and then your high deductible plan. Not proposing major changes to that, however, depending on the direction and everything, we may have to make some tweaks to the plan. No matter the direction, though, you can see your current high deductible plan has a deductible of $2,600 for the single, $3,600 for the family. That does, per the IRS regulations, needs to go up to $2,700 in order to keep it HSA-eligible because of the structure that you have within that being an embedded deductible. So, that does have to increase no matter the decision that you make on any sort of vendor or anything like that.
This is federal regulation?
That's a federal regulation to keep it HSA-eligible, and you definitely want to keep that because your members utilize their health savings accounts.
Right.
So, in order to keep that allowable, per the federal regulations, you've got to increase that to $2,700, and we would recommend increasing that, the family as well, and set up to keep it the same distance, up to $3,700, so. Other than that, there are a couple of things on there, depending on the vendor you would choose. You currently have a, that deductible is co-mingled in and out of network. If you would move to a network arrangement, you'd have to make some changes to that to have a more in-network and out-of-network. You already have that on your PPO today, but under the high deductible plan, everything's kind of mingled together, so you'd have to make that change. Any other, any questions on the summary of benefits? Okay. The next page on here is just a quick report on your plan costs so far for 2000, for the plan year 2017 going into March of 2018. You can see the top part here runs April through, April 17 through March of 18. It shows your enrollment, maximum claims, your actual paid claims, claims you've had over the specific threshold, which is your stop-loss on that. You have $150,000 stop-loss, with a tweak to that as an extra $100,000 out of the gate on your, on your stop-loss. You can see your net claims, percentage of expected, you can see in the, in the top here, you see it's running about 107% of expected, so it is coming in a little higher than what the, I would say, the underwriters were projecting in claims, but that could reverse back to being close to expected as well. So, you've still got three months left in your current contract. You know, that's a projection done by an actuary 15, 16 months out in advance, so they're just trying to predict the future. Generally, they come in pretty close to expected, you're just a little bit over that right now. Right below that, you can see just how it compares to 2016, 2017. So, you are a little further ahead than what you were at this point in time last year, but overall, again, some of that was projected because medical inflation and medical costs continue to rise.
Yep.
Any questions on the report? Okay. The next page in there does show you a summary of the bids that we've received through the RFP. This isn't the every single bid we got in, this is a condensed version because we have dozens of columns on here in order to do that, so we tried to kind of get the high level of what we think are the best options on the page, so to speak. So, I'm not going to go line by line through this for the sake of time and ease, but you can see in this first column here, kind of in that tan, is current BAS and Sun Life. So, BAS is your current third-party administrator, Sun Life is your reinsurance carrier that carries your stop-loss. The next couple of columns in here, they're in white, you can see renewal BAS, Sun Life, renewal BAS, HCC. So, really, the difference between those two columns is just who the reinsurance carrier is, and the difference between those two. The next two columns there in kind of tan, renewal UMR, HCC, and there are actually two of those, and I'm going to talk about the difference between those two, but both look at HCC as the reinsurance carrier, and then last, renewal Anthem, HCC. Again, there are a lot of other stop-loss options, a couple of other network options we looked at, but at the end of the day, we really felt like these are, these are your best options to look at. So, you can see, if you look at current BAS, Sun Life, and go down to that total administrative fixed cost, and we line out what's all included in that, and that's your current structure, you have PHCS on your network for providers, and then reference-based pricing for those outside of that, as well as you do have direct contracts with some of your local providers that have been, to avoid some of that disruption with reference-based pricing, I think that's worked out really well. Overall, looking historically, I think BAS has done a really good job of getting the plan where it is today, so it's been good to work with BAS over the last, last year, really, they've been a good administrator and everything. I think the plan has run well. So, you can see total administrative fixed costs across the board there. You can see the BAS up a little bit, and then renewal UMR, HCC, so just kind of a different structure on that. It's a big percentage, but when you filter out to the actual dollar amount overall, it's a much smaller amount, but looking at that UMR, which is actually United Healthcare, so the big national company, United Healthcare, owns a kind of a TPA arm, a third-party administrator arm, that's a little more nimble and flexible than what working with United Healthcare is. So, it has the feel of a TPA because they can do different things, carving out different things, that United Healthcare is a big, large entity you just can't do, and then renewal Anthem, HCC, you can see on the page there. Right below that, it outlines your stop-loss options, and you can see Sun Life still is coming in pretty, pretty high on the stop-loss there, so that's what drove us to look more at HCC, just as being more competitive. HCC actually did include, right now, you have a transplant rider, included that under the stop-loss policy, which I think, you know, we weighed that last year in the pros and cons of that. Financially, was, it was pretty net neutral, but this year, the way they included it, I think it's a good savings to drop that policy out and just have that come up right underneath your, your actual stop-loss policy, so that a good savings there, currently at $16.33, and that would actually go away under HCC. Your specific premium composite, you can see, is up a couple of percentage points under the BAS, HCC, and then pretty flat, small decrease there with HCC, UMR. So, overall, the view from the underwriters is, they're fairly on equal, equal grounds, so to speak, because they're, they're not heavily weighing one or the other in that pricing. So, you can see your total annual fixed costs, if you drop down the numerical A there, you can see your fixed costs, if you go to that renewal BAS, HCC, which would really be what we'd be looking at to renew with BAS and your current modified kind of reference-based pricing structure, you see your fixed costs are actually down 6.3%, and anytime we can see fixed costs going down, that's a, it's a good sign. That's fixed costs, that is money that we know we're going to spend to just operate the plan. Whether anyone goes in to get anything done this year, we've got to spend the fixed costs just to operate, operate the plan, so that, you can see that going down 6.3%. UMR and HCC, you can see going down 3.8%, and then Anthem's up 23%. And I should have done this a minute ago, so the difference here on the two HCC columns is, or the two UMR columns is, UMR offers two network options. One is their big broad network, that Choice Plus, that first column, the second is their core network, which is something that we really wanted to look at, because essentially what that does is it narrows down the networks, you get better pricing. You know, when we really dove into it, it does offer better pricing, and we think it's a good option perhaps now or in the future, if you'd ever want to move towards that. But the underwriters didn't give as much of a concession on their projected claims as what we would have thought that they would have. You know, it would pull out a couple of big providers that you have, University of Chicago, it's not in that core network, that narrower network, it is in the large network, Franciscan up in Michigan City, it's not in the core, it is in, in the Choice Plus. So, it's just narrowing down that network, get a little bit better pricing. We just thought that we would have seen a better pricing by narrowing that down, because it, anytime you narrow something down and shift utilization to certain providers, those providers give you better pricing, and we just didn't see that coming into play as much there.
Significant number of employees using those.
University of Chicago was, was pretty big.
Yep.
That was the biggest one in there that it really disrupted what you currently use. You had some up in Michigan City usage, but not a lot, if it was just that one, maybe, but you did have significant utilization, University of Chicago, so.
If they were narrowing the network and giving you a 10% discount, that would be worth it. This is a 2%, probably not worth it to lose those hospitals for your people.
Which brings us down to that claims cost down there at the bottom section. So, again, claims cost, these are the projected claims of what underwriters are saying, here's what we think your claims are going to be. Could come in a little higher, could come in lower, it's just their projection of what those are, but we do look at those when we look at the funding of the plan, we look at those and to compare the differences between different options. So, we certainly take, take those into account, and you can see across the board there, there's not a large variance, if you're looking like at the, your current structure versus the UMR with the Choice Plus network, not a large variance between the two, but there is a little bit in there. So, really, what this suggests to me, and based upon some of the other analysis that we had done on your current structure, when you net out the fees and everything paid to Inetico for their negotiation of contracts and everything, the pricing as it stands today, I think, would be very similar to that. Again, I think they've, Inetico BAS have done a really great job thus far in getting you where you're at, from where you were a few years ago, but I think the, the structure with you- But I think the structure with UMR, HCC on that Choice Plus is pricing-wise comparable to what you currently have today as far as paid claims. So you can see if you just drop down to that second to last line, total expected costs, up 4.2% with BAS, HCC. If you go to UMR, HCC and that Choice Plus, it's up 2.6%, which in the healthcare field, insurance field, both are good options as far as we see, just in renewals and everything with the way medical inflation runs.
The timing of your bidding was obviously good. Your claims are up 7%. Trend is running about 12%. You're looking at renewals here and an option that is flat-lined or slight decrease. So given the times, given your claims experience, this is certainly a good outcome.
And that Choice Plus network is the big national network. You're compared to what you have today as far as utilization in that network, in-network, it was running about 96% match. So and, you know, we always see some being out of network, some specialists, chiropractors, those tend to fall out of network just kind of in general. But overall, the match from what your members are currently doing today is good under that Choice Plus option.
And I think, I think just to remind everybody, you know, it's taken us two years to get the census data, which is what BAS brought us to. And prior to them being involved in our insurance, we were with, we were with a provider that was not doing any census data.
Yep.
So then when we went to the market, we couldn't go to the market because we had no census data. So it's taken us two years to get BAS onboard, to create the data, which now allows us to take it to the market to where we can, instead of going out and negotiating with different hospitals and different agreements and different MOUs, we're now in a situation where we have the ability to look at going into a network that is a very, very large network and creates a lot of openness and clarity for the employees. So, you know, it sounds like a lot of words, but I can't tell you how much work this was over the last two years to get it to where we're at today. So this is a big thing. This is a big deal. I know I say that a lot, but this is a big deal for us from where we've been. And I just wanted to point that out because that's real, that's real important, so.
And Tony, I guess just to clarify for everyone, I'm sure that's somewhat glazed over in the crowd of all the numbers. I mean, the bottom line is, is that if we stayed with our current plan, we would be up 4.2%. In that current plan, we're still in the cost plus, we have a contract with cost plus, employees, you know, there's no network, now network.
Correct. It's the same structure.
It's the same structure, which is part of the issue that we have with the employees. It's not, they're not used to it.
It's different. I think it saved you considerable money when it was implemented and done and I think a lot of the kinks have been barked out when you moved to BAS.
Right.
But yeah, it is a different structure than what most people are used to having under an insurance plan.
And that's a 4.2% increase.
In expected costs.
Over expected.
Yep.
And then we have this, we have the potential to make the change and go with United Healthcare and UMR and that's only a 2.6% increase, but now we're back into a traditional in-network, out-of-network. You have a card, you have somewhere to call, you know where you.
Network is very big.
Very, very big, very broad.
And that goes back to what we were talking about with the Choice Plus and the core.
Yep.
You know, the Choice Plus, we've got the, you know, the option here at 2.6% is getting that bigger network and so that's what everyone's more used to and I think that's also some issues here at the county we don't have to deal with as far as administrating and dealing and chasing down things that are running through cost plus and things like that, so.
Plus, this is very user-friendly for the employees.
Yep.
I mean, the way that you're going to be able to navigate if we were to move to something like this, the way you're going to be able to then navigate through the insurance is going to be night and day from where we're at now. It is going to be very easy, very simple, and it's going to be a phone call away. It's, and that's, that was the other thing that we were trying to do here is make it more easier for the employees to understand how it works. And in order to be able to control your claims, everybody has to know how it works. And if you don't know how it works, usually you can see it in your claims. So it's the beginning of a march towards a better program here for everybody, for the county and the employees.
Yep.
Okay. Next page in there is dental, much smaller piece, but obviously still a very important piece of your benefits offering. You see current BAS administration fee, $1.95, staying at that. As of today, you don't have a network under your dental plan, which is fine. There's pros and cons to that, but we did look at a couple of network options in that and if you did move away from BAS on the medical, would probably move away from BAS on the dental. So you can see Anthem, Delta Dental, and then UMR. All are good options. I think our recommendation would be if you're moving away from BAS on the medical, Delta Dental does a great job. It's all they do is dental insurance. They're not trying to do anything else. They just focus on dental. They have a big network. 82% of the dentists in Porter County are in their network. So you'll still have dentists not in network. Some dentists don't join any networks. Members can still go to those. The benefits as they're paid or would operate just like they are today, so to speak, because today you don't have a network agreement with those either. So every, anytime you go out of network, when there's no network agreement, members could face a balance billing because even BAS today pays a percentage of usual and customary. So if a dentist bills $1,000 for a cleaning, their BAS doesn't cut a check for $1,000. So there's a balance billing that could occur, still could occur under Delta if they go out of network. But again, 82% are in-network, so that does away with the balance billing on the dental side. Anthem and UMR both offer those options as well, but we think Delta makes a pretty good match for up here for Porter County.
And last, hopefully not least, there's a one-page flyer about onsite clinics. It included in your packet, we work with the Porter School Trust, which has onsite, near-site clinics. We believe that that is a really good strategy for the employee and for the employer, for the county in reducing costs. So I won't belabor this. This one page will show you what happens when an employee walks into an onsite, near-site clinic. Services are free to them, so primary care services, prescription drugs, lab work. These clinics really ought to be referred to more as wellness centers because the whole concept here is to spend more time with the patient, do coaching, do wellness-related type activities, and hopefully you see as a result of that, claim costs coming down. So this goes through and talks about the type of drugs that would be covered, the type of lab work that would be covered, and again, a longer period of time between the physician and the employee. National average is, is people spend about six, seven minutes with a primary care physician. In a clinic, it's more like 20 minutes. So they're able to treat, they strep throat in five minutes, do your antibiotics, and the remaining period of the time, they're able to really start coaching people on wellness activities. We just came from a meeting with the Porter Trust and they would certainly like to collaborate with you.
Good.
The more people that are involved in clinics, the more hours that are available for everybody. There also is certainly a lot of interest and potential space. If you have available space, they would like to talk with you about that as well. So we think this is exciting. We have about 60-some clinics in the state that we work with and we've had great results in reducing costs, improving employee health, and satisfaction from the employees projected is really high. So that's the onsite clinic.
Yeah, as everyone knows, we are in the throes of relooking at building renovations and other things and we, after your comments there, we are going to be talking to the providers to see if there's a way that maybe we could even have something in-house here at the building, where we actually have a clinic. And we're actually looking at the Portage location too for actually having a clinic within our government buildings. And what that does is that by going to these centers, you get a list of top 100 drugs, you walk out with free drugs, the whole thing, but what that does is that you do not go to your United Healthcare plan and turn it into a typical doctor thing, which then goes in on your claims and your insurance goes up. So if we can move towards in-house clinics, use these services for that, we feel it will drive our costs down on the folks just going to go see their general doctor. And so that's another, there's going to be some education there we would have to do, but this is where this whole area is trending towards right now. And we're very interested in looking into it. And again, it's another service, another convenient, convenience for our employer. Plus, we're also using, we may be using our county buildings to have other people that are maybe on the Chesterton School and some of the other providers that are on this clinic could use this building and the services there too. So it's a convenience item for our employees and other people within the county. So we're definitely looking at this with laser focus and we feel that this is an area that we need to research more and talk to people about, but I think as we've all talked back here, as we've in our many meetings in our health insurance, we feel that this is something that's very worthwhile taking a look at and researching. So, and I know you gentlemen have given us a lot of good information, so I'm excited. Anybody else want to chime in too? I know.
No, I agree. I'm looking forward to looking into this some more. Anyone who's on the high deductible plan knows the first few months of the year, you really get hit with prescription costs and so forth and that really help out.
Yes, great marriage.
With common drugs just handed to you.
Jim, you've actually been a firsthand user of clinics.
Yeah, it's, it's very convenient and as Jeff pointed out, it's true. If you go in there, you feel like you're catching the flu or a bug or something, they give you your prescriptions, medications right there. You don't have to run off to Walgreens or CVS. And I like the idea of sharing facilities. Jeff pointed out that if, you know, a Chesterton employee could come in here, but likewise, we could.
That's exactly right.
Utilize their facility that they have right there in downtown Chesterton.
Yeah, Mariville, potentially Portage.
Yeah, and they have other facilities around the area. So we would just be enhancing these two locations and making it more central. We have parking garage, we have, you know, so we have a health department downstairs. I mean, from a space planning perspective, we already have a waiting room. We already have, we already have a lot of things here in this building. We just need to, we just need to figure it out and enhance it. And that's, again, it's another service for our employees that make it more convenient for them and that's what we're after here. So, you know, I'm just tickled to death where this thing's going. It's been a, it's been a long journey, but we're getting there. And it feels good now as I did after our week, our meeting last week. So more to come.
Good. Thank you for your time. We appreciate it.
Yep.
Thank you.
Yeah, I think what we would like to do, you know, based on the presentation and our discussions, we would like you to move towards finalizing some numbers.
Good.
On the Choice Plus.
Yep.
United Healthcare.
Yep.
I think getting our employees into a.
A network.
A network like this is going to come back and I think it's going to be very positive. And I think that anybody looks around all the networks, the Northwest Indiana, Chicagoland, United Healthcare network is, it's prominent. It's one of the best out there. So we're not leading you into the path of anything else. We feel that this is the direction we want to go. I think the dental program as well. So as you know, our renewals are April 1st.
Yep.
So we would like to have you back at our 13th meeting.
We'll be here.
To where we can move on this because if we do something of that nature, there's open enrollment, there's a lot of work that needs to be done.
Yep.
With all hands on deck. And so.
Great. We'll be here for you.
Leave us there.
Yep, we'll do it.
Thank you, gentlemen.
Thank you. Great day.
Yep. Yeah, that's, we got a hitch in the giddy up on that one there. There's something wrong with that speaker. So good news. Next up, we have Shive Hatterley. This is a proposal for design work at Valparaiso Courthouse. I'm not sure you have anybody consenting for that.
Oh, I'm sorry. No, we don't.
Okay, so we just.
Yeah, this is.
What the proposal for is, and this proposal has been vetted by the Board of Commissioners in many meetings. This is a proposal for the design work at the Valparaiso Courthouse. This is the beginning of us moving towards the capital improvement plan. This is the first step for the design work at the Valparaiso Courthouse. The dollar amount for this contract is $265,200. And this would start the design work for all of the work that we plan on doing at the courthouse. Also, this contract was also vetted by our construction manager, who's our owner's rep, Skilman Corporation, who has been on board for several months now. So we've made sure that the contracts are, they sync up with each other, there's not duplication of services and we feel that we've arrived at a really good number. Shive Hatterley is a local firm here in Valparaiso and they do a tremendous amount of work in historical and building envelopes. And that's one of the main things that we're going to be attacking on this historic building is we need to button up our exterior skin of this building because we have leaky windows, we have a lot of things in there. So we've matched up the right firm to do, and specialize in the area where this work needs to be done, so.
A lot of these guys have done work there before.
Yes, that, and Shive Hatterley has also done work on the courthouse in the past too, so, yeah. So that is the Shive Hatterley proposal. I'll open it up to the floor, any, to the commissioners, if they had any comments, questions, or if they have a motion, whatever, whatever your pleasure.
I'll make a motion to hire Shive Hatterley, $265,200 for the design work at the courthouse.
Second. We have a motion as second for Shive Hatterley for the proposal design work at the Valparaiso courthouse in the amount of $265,200. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, post saying sign. Motion carries. Next up on the agenda is Shive Hatterley again, another Valparaiso firm, and they have been selected, or we hope will be selected by the Board of Commissioners for the proposal for the design work at the Expo Center. There, this is the second contract. We have more coming for the rest of the capital improvement plan, but we needed to get the Expo Center moving because we plan on closing that down after the fair. So there's a lot of logistics in our planning with the Expo Center because we have to communicate to our staff when we're going to close down, so we don't do any bookings while we're closed down. So now we need to get Shive Hatterley moving on this. I know Shive Hatterley has worked with the Expo Center in the past. We had met with them several years ago and they had come out and gave us some design concepts to look at that we felt were very adequate with what we're trying to do. Again, this contract proposal was submitted to Skilman Corporation. They have also looked at all these contracts and again, have done the same vetting that we have here. And so this proposal for the Expo Center is $456,000, flat, and as if anybody knows, the scope out there is pretty significant. We're talking about all-new heating and cooling. I mean, this is a, this is a significant upgrade to the wonderful Expo Center that we have out there, Lori, but we're going to make it, we're going to make it a little bit more, we're going to make it a little nicer for out there. So any questions to the board again about this proposal?
What was the number for that, $465?
And again, that is also within the budgeted amount that we have within our budgets that we've put together for these projects. So we're also looking at our budgets that we're working on as well too, and this is well within that dollar amount.
I'm excited to get going on that one. Well, all of it, but especially that long overdue. I'll make a motion to accept the proposal for design work at the Expo Center by Shive Hatterley at $456,000.
Second. We have a motion as second for Shive Hatterley for the proposal for design work at the Expo Center for $456,000. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, post saying sign. Motion carries. Get ready for the meetings, Lori, because we're going to have a lot of them. So we're off on those two. Those two will be the only contracts at this point that we'll be using with Shive Hatterley. So we wanted to get them off and get them moving from a timing standpoint and our future meetings, we'll be rolling out our other projects as we're putting some fine-tuned and negotiating and other things on those other projects as well too. So we're trying to get stuff done and get it out as we go. It's a lot of work. So thank you. Next, right-stuff timekeeping policy, and I think that Scott McClure was going to give us an update on that. So as we've.
So as we've, have rolled out the new timekeeping software in the auditor's office, our new HR director, and frankly, our office have been attempting to kind of make the landscape make sense now as everyone tries to interact with the, with the timekeeping software. And so I had, with the help of the HR director and the auditor's office, we did an email last week, basically kind of starting some of the basic ground rules of how to utilize the system. Because there were some basic questions that this board needed to be able to make a decision on so that other things could happen, whether it's programming, training, et cetera. So in, in a nutshell, the point of doing the email was to elicit those unique issues that certain departments have. So far, I've received three emails with some unique situations and they were unique. And so overall, the idea of this policy, and this is obviously in the general terms as we keep moving towards the actual implementation and full usage, but basically the, the hourly full-time and part-time employees would be non-exempt. They would be qualifying for comp time or overtime, depending on the department that they're in. They would be required to be clocking in and clocking out in the traditional sense and that would include lunch as well. The chief deputies and assistant directors, and some of those have different names, but a number two position, so to speak, would be exempt from overtime or, or comp time, but they would be clocking in and out as well in the traditional sense. Department heads, directors, superintendents, et cetera, would be not doing the traditional clock in and clock out. However, they would be still utilizing a portion of the program by using daily form and Write Stuff. And then they would be recording their actual work time on a daily basis and they would also be exempt from overtime and comp time. We have some exemption, some departments that are exempt for different reasons. The prosecutor's office, not the chief de, not the elected prosecutor or the chief deputy, those are state employees, but the remaining would be treated like department heads in the sense of using the daily matters or the, or the daily form to record their time. For instance, one of the unique issues that we have on the, that Mr. McCabe brought up from the Highway Department was a lot of the times his, his employees are not at the garage at lunch, they're out at assignment, wherever that may be. So Andy will be getting an email from the Commissioner's Office that if they're not at, if they're not at their respective shops, whether that be North Center or South, then they would not need to be clocking in and clocking out for lunch. However, they do have supervisors on, on location at most of these times. So I won't go through the other exemptions, but I can tell you that something similar with a group of employees in the assessor's office and also down in the health department. And for instance, the health department, we've got four environmental and three food employees who are out and about on a regular basis and aren't necessarily here either to clock in and clock out for lunch. So we're kind of working through that, we're getting some other emails, and we're going to be dealing with these as they come in. For instance, the sheriff's department, 911, the jail, they're utilizing Write Stuff, they're utilizing it, a scheduling portion of Write Stuff that works for their department. So you're, you may see that they're exempt from the punch in, punch out, but they're unique, they're different, and they're using Write Stuff and it works for their department. They're 24 hour, you know, 24-hour operations and there's reasons why that they're doing it that way. And that's, as we're trying to have a policy that's clear, we're also trying to keep in mind that not everything is this like kind in county government. And so that's as we're going through. And generally speaking, that's going to be the policy. We're going to keep honing it and down until we actually get it fully written out and, and implemented. But from this point, the commissioners are basically giving the direction to the auditor's office and to the departments that this is the direction we're heading. If there are unique circumstances that would require a deviation from the policy, then we're willing to hear those unique situations and move forward with them. But at this point in time, that's the direction we're headed and want everybody to fully cooperate and move towards that.
Thank you, Scott. Any questions for the board? Now we'll move towards revision to Stormwater Advisory Board.
First reading. Also, I have to do, okay. So this would be a revision to ordinance number 16-03, that was the ordinance creating the Stormwater Management Program and Stormwater Management Board. As part of that was section 14.04.04, which was Stormwater Advisory Council, which included, that created the Stormwater Advisory Board. This is subsection B1, and the only change is it's a member of the Board of Commissioners membership or their designee. So right now, it has to be one of them. This would allow them to either be them or their designee, and that's the sum total of the revision.
So with that, it's an ordinance, right?
Yep.
So with that, we have to hold a public hearing. And as you've been to our meetings before, we have to do the funny little thing, but we're going to recess the board meeting right now, we're going to open it up to a public meeting. And in the public meeting, we're going to give three opportunities for someone to come forward and speak in favor. And we're also going to give somebody three opportunities, or anybody, three opportunities to come forward and speak against. And then at that point, we close the public meeting and then the commissioners can vote. This is an ordinance, this is what you do with public hearings with ordinances, and this is first reading. So at our next meeting, if this passes, though, it won't go final until there's a second reading. So with that, what I'd like to do is anybody wishing to come forward and speak against this ordinance, please come forward now. First opportunity. Second call, anybody wishing to come forward and speaking against this ordinance? Third and final call, anybody wishing to come forward to speak against this ordinance? We will now move to anybody in favor. First call, anybody wishing to come forward to speak in favor of this ordinance? Second call, anybody wishing to come forward to speak in favor of this ordinance? Third and final time, anybody wishing to come forward and speak in favor of this ordinance? With that, the public hearing is now closed. We will now open it to the floor for the Board of Commissioners. Any questions? No questions? The pleasure of the board.
Motion to approve. Do I need to include the number and stuff?
Just amendment to ordinance number 1603 subsection 14.04.040.
So move.
Motion to.
Second. All those in favor, we have a motion and a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, post saying sign. Motion carries. We'll be back on the 13th to put the second reading into play. So thank you. Next on the agenda, we have Walter Lenkos, Parks Department. This again is the second reading of an ordinance establishing a fund for deposit of proceeds from a land and water conservation fund grant to the Porter County Parks Department. Good morning, Walter.
Good morning.
Motion to approve.
Second.
On second reading.
We have a motion and a second on second reading to approve. All those in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? Oh.
You did.
Motion carries.
Walter.
Thanks, Walter. Uh, we, next is up recorder John Miller. This again is follow-up business that we did at our last meeting. This is the second reading of a public ordinance. Good morning, Mr. Miller.
Good morning, sir.
Uh, this is, the first one on here, this is second reading, an ordinance establishing the manner and form in which the recorder may provide bulk form copies to a bulk user. This is second reading. I'll open it up to the floor.
Motion to approve.
Second. We have a motion and a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, post saying sign. Motion carries. Second ordinance is again, second reading for the recorder, and this is an ordinance requiring the recorder of Porter County to watermark bulk form copies. So open it up to the floor again for the commissioner.
Motion to approve on second reading.
Second. We have a motion and a second on second reading to establish an ordinance requiring the recorder of Porter County to watermark bulk form copies. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, post saying sign. Motion carries. Thanks, John.
Thank you. I've got, I've got just a moment. I'd like to check the commissioners, there was some very nice comments made to me last time I was here, two weeks ago, and I was kind of called speechless, which is, if you know me, is very rare. I was very humbled by those and I want to thank you again. And I also, I want to return the compliments. I'll tell you, as an office holder, I've been here seven years plus, very encouraging to see what's going on in Porter County. It's extremely inspiring to see what's going on right now. And I want to thank you for all the hard work that you all have done. So thank you.
Thank you, John. It means a lot. Sheriff Dave Reynolds. We have some, a request to purchase new vehicles and equipment for vehicles in the amount of $268,085.79. Good morning, gentlemen. Morning, Sheriff.
Morning.
The car guy. Yeah, kind of.
So Scott, we had got quotes for the vehicles from three or four different places, three different places? That's what these packets are here. Did you want us to, you want us to open those up and go through?
At least tell us who you got quotes from and what you were asking for so we can.
Go ahead.
Yeah, just give.
We started out with the state QPA from Livingston Ford, that was kind of the standard. From there, we went to Lake Shore, Curry Ford in Art Hill, and Lake Shore was the lowest on all four bids. Close.
So everyone you approached gave you a pri, a bid?
Correct.
Imagine that.
And they beat, and they beat the state QPA.
Well, good. Good, that's good. And was there a dollar amount for the low that we could put in there? I just want to enter it into the record, the record.
Sure. Um, we did quotes for four vehicles. The first one is a F-150, that was $30,976. The Ford Explorer Interceptor was $27,199. The Ford Transit 350 is $25,482. And the last one was the Ford Connect, $23,398.
So we have those numbers entered into the record. Open up the floor of the commissioners, any questions for these gentlemen?
I just appreciate the, the due diligence, the hard work you, you went to get the best price. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Can I say, we, we bought, we're buying one van that came out of our utility money and we're buying one truck that's coming out of our weight measures. So that's, I know most counties don't, sheriff's departments don't contribute as far as the purchase of vehicles, but we appreciate from last year and this year, the, the work that Major Gears done, putting this together. And I know the local businesses really wanted to take that bid away from downstate, which the vote was in their court, so obviously they came through.
That's right. Yep, locals better. Locals better.
Is this total correct? $268,085.79.
Yeah, so, but the county council they had gave us a line item for vehicles for $50,000. And so with that $50,000 plus what we came in with this time, we're about $60,000 less what we've asked from you guys last year. So if you remember, we, about nine vehicles a year is what we average, you know, about 25,000 miles a year, a year on a car. So our cars right now have between 125 to 160,000 miles that we're getting rid of, that we're recycling. Yep, recycling.
So, but to be clear, the total contract we're approving is three, $318,085.79.
No.
Okay.
The $268,085.79.
But that's, that's what we're paying.
Yes.
That's after you pay 50.
Yes.
Okay, so we're back to 318,85.79.
We have to prove the total in there.
Right? That the total car purchase is that much.
Yes.
Of which you guys have a $50,000 line item, of which in the commissioner's budget, there's a line item that's going to do the 268,85.79, right?
Yes.
All right.
To see if this motion covers.
Yeah.
I move to approve the contract for $318,085.79, $268,085.79, which will come out of the commissioner's fund. Move to approve.
Second. We have a motion and a second to approve what Lori just said. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, post saying sign. Motion carries. Go order some vehicles. Thank you, gentlemen.
Scott, do you need?
So you keep them.
You keep them.
You do keep them.
Yep.
Because I'm sure they're all tight.
Yep. Thanks, Jeff. Lori Daly.
He does have a concussion, Lori.
So Lori, we have a request to transfer, excuse the transfer, a request to transfer funds, Fund 4005 from account 3980, event expenses to account 3210, travel, in the amount of $374.92 to reimburse the Fair Board for state convention, which was held January 5th through January 7th.
Motion to approve.
Second. We have a motion and a second to approve transfer of funds for the Expo Center. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, post saying sign. Motion carries. Thank you. Thank you, Lori.
Be careful.
John Snyder, our assessor, come forward. This is Equival Tax Solutions LLC. This is a renewal of their professional services agreement with your department. Morning, John.
Morning. Mr. Good. Morning, Mr. Biggs, Laura.
We've used these guys before.
That's correct.
This is just your annual contract?
Yes, sir. Correct. Okay. We, we had a lot of appeals come in last year. Again, we'd like to tell taxpayers to stop filing them, but it doesn't happen. So this is just a shot in the arm to our office to assist us to move efficiently and quickly on appeal settlements and stuff, things like that. So we'd like to keep them on board. Thank you.
Second. We have a motion and a second for the approval of an Equival Tax Solutions agreement for the assessor's office. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, post saying sign. Motion carries. Thank you, John.
Mr. Good, can I say?
Sure, sure, sure.
Echoing Mr. Miller's sentiments, I was just in a conversation with a, an assessor from a neighboring county who can't believe that I feel no pressure from the fiscal body as well as the executive, the commissioners on assessed value throughout the county. And I, in the seven years that I've been here, I've never had any pressure. And I think that a lot of that is because of our solid foundation, the wise use of the hospital principle, things like that. So I, I appreciate that, just coming from the assessor, that I don't have to feel, I get pressures from a lot of places, but not from, not from you guys. So thank you very much. Appreciate that.
Thank you, John. Thanks for the kind words.
Do I get any kind words back?
Doing a great job.
No, you are doing a good job.
Memorial Opera House, Scott McDonald, Director. This is Schmidt Associates. Morning, Scott.
Good morning.
How you doing?
Well, how about you?
I'm hanging in there.
Good. We have a very exciting thing happening. As you're aware, we received the grant last year from the Department of Natural Resources and this is to create a project manual that allows us to get an assessment of the opera house from pretty much stem to stern and let us know what we need to do to start digging in for any preservation or restoration efforts that we're looking at. We did send out invitations to bid, we received five back. We received word from Altus Work in Chicago of $72,475. DLZ here was 63.5. Cremesh &amp; Cremesh of South Bend was $56,900. Schmidt Associates came in at a fee of $55,285. And Martin Riley of Fort Wayne came in at $38,400, but they did not include reimbursable expenses such as travel, things like that. And they, when I contacted them, they said that could be upwards of 20, 25% in addition to that $38,000. So Schmidt actually came in pretty close to the lowest bid. I was very, very impressed with their proposal. They will be giving us a long-term maintenance plan for the opera house. in Chicago of $72,475, DLZ here was $63,500, Crumlish &amp; Crumlish of South Bend was $56,900, Schmidt Associates came in at a fee of $55,285, and Martin Riley of Fort Wayne came in at $38,400, but they did not include reimbursable expenses such as travel, things like that, and they, when I contacted them, they said that could be upwards of 20%, 25% in addition to that $38,000. So Schmidt actually came in pretty close to the lowest bid, I was very, very impressed with their proposal. They will be giving us a long-term maintenance plan for the opera house, and the way that they assess things, they go, like I said, through the entire building, their engineers are all on staff there, they come through and they say on a scale of zero to four, zero being, you need to fix this now, four being maybe 10 years down the road, 15 years down the road, they do everything from roof tiles to door handles to floor tiles, so we'll have a very, very clear picture of what needs to be done to keep the building around for another 125 years, hopefully.
Where are they located?
They're from Indianapolis.
And as we know, it's a historic building, so it's a lot different than a lot of our other buildings. So again, this is a pathway to how we take care of this building going forward, so once this report, which is being funded by federal dollars.
Correct.
We'll have a template to, for the Board of Commissioners and the Memorial Opera House Foundation and staff to start moving in a positive and sane direction to where everybody is rolling in the same direction. So I think it's, I think it's a good thing, I know it was properly vetted, because I had all the proposals dropped on my desk and it was that thick, but I, I think it's a good step in the right direction. Scott, real quick, why don't you tell everybody what just happened the last couple of weeks with your new curtain and...
Sure.
I know it's, we, we're excited about it.
We're very, very excited. We recently had the lobby and lounge painted of the back, of the opera house, and we also, because of the generosity of the county commissioners and Memorial Opera House Foundation, we were able to purchase new window draperies and a new grand curtain for the opera house. So we have this beautiful, beautiful dark blue curtain up now with gold trim, and on February 5th and 6th, all the new window treatments will be going in, so we're very excited about that. We're getting shutters over the palladium windows, so it'll be a really nice update to the space, and again, it's becoming a space that a lot of our promoters come in, a lot of people that are looking to do concerts, they come in and they say, we really want to be here, because it looks so much different than it did just three years ago. So thank you for your trust in all of us to make these things happen.
And how old was the old curtain?
Over 45 years old, so... Yeah, it, who knows?
It's barely hanging up.
Yeah, exactly, it was really, really looking rough, and there's a company that's reached out to us, that they actually take in old curtains and things like that, they repurpose them, and then the funds that are used are used to support things like the National Endowment for the Arts, school art programs, things along those lines. I'm in discussion with them to possibly help support some of our programs as well that we do with children, so there's some good discussion happening there. Yep.
How did your adventure go over to the east?
West. Which, which one?
Yeah, the Star.
The Star, really, really well. They were very generous to us, they have offered us 385 of their seats, Stretch is actually going out there Wednesday morning to start pulling seats, and we are very, very excited that we'll be having brand-new to us seats that will be in a little bit better condition than the ones that are currently 50 years old. Also, other equipment that they gave us, a couple mobile bars, some desks for office furniture, several subtle things that they just said, if you need this, it's yours. So tables, all that, it's really, really fantastic and extremely generous.
Yeah, well, that's good, because I've been working with the White House for a lot many years, and when that all came up, I turned it over to you, so I'm glad we're, you know, and they've been very generous too over there.
It's really wonderful.
The only thing, I was trying to get us in there a little earlier before everybody else, but we got in there.
Yes, yes, and the seats, they...
And that's what we really...
They really were very excited that the seats were going to be getting a good home. We're going to really try and onboard our patrons as well as far as looking at the cost, because we need to look at the subfloor of the auditorium to make sure that we can bolt the seats to something, so we're really going to work on onboarding our patrons and say, look, we have these, now we need to take the next step to fund this as far as getting the subfloor replaced, carpeting, all of that, so that you guys have a nice place to sit.
If you need any help from our Buildings Facilities Department, too, make sure you get with them, and maybe they can help somehow, or at least help you problem solve some of the things or whatever, but all hands on deck.
Absolutely.
Now, those seats that you're speaking of will replace the seats that are currently in there.
Correct, correct.
How long have those seats been in our...
50 years, they came in in 1967.
And what are you going to do with those seats?
Those, I'm going to reach out to a couple of the other local theater groups, there's the Fourth Street Theater in Chesterton, Footlight, there's a couple smaller groups that are looking for chairs, that are looking for some permanence, so they aren't just sitting on folding chairs.
What do you, what do you think about, you know, maybe working with Kurt and putting, you know, a dozen of them on site and trying to sell them, or what's the word I'm looking for?
Like at auction.
Auction them off?
How many do you think are in good enough shape to do that?
Of our 350 that we have, probably, I would say, 80% of them are in decent shape, the ones that really stand out, the ones that are in the worst shape.
I would think that there are a lot of people that have been very dedicated to that facility over the last 50 years, would be more than interested in having those in their man cave or den.
Absolutely. Absolutely, I will work with Kurt on that, and we'll get that rolling.
I guess we really didn't explain it much, but these are, the Star Theater in Maryville's being shut down and razed, and so these are where the seats are coming from, is from the Star Theater in Maryville to here, so I guess you didn't really say that.
I didn't either, so...
That's kind of neat, too, let that place live on.
Absolutely, and that's what the facility members at the Star were saying to us, too, because we were just overwhelmed by their generosity, and they said, as long as it's going to a good home, where we know that it's going to be taken care of, we're happy to do this, so...
Awesome. So what we have is a service agreement before our board for Schmidt and Associates, the architectural firm that has been vetted by the foundation board and our employees and oversight by the commissioners, so I'll open the floor to the commissioners.
Motion to approve Schmidt Associates at $55,285.
Second. We have a motion and a second for Schmidt and Associates, service agreement for the renovations at the Memorial Opera House, all of those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. Opposed, same sign. We're off and running.
Thank you so much.
Thank you, Scott.
We open up February 15th and, or February 16th, and we run through March 4th, February 15th, there's of course the ribbon cutting, and we'll be showing off all of the...
Can I RSVP now?
Yes.
Okay, I'm RSVP.
Natalie?
Yeah, Natalie, I'm RSVP.
Yeah, you are.
Thank you very much.
Thanks, Scott, great work.
Thank you.
Next, Matt Steckley, Valpo Courthouse Metal Detector's quote. We had a metal detector that is failing over at the courthouse, and I know you've been working with the Sheriff's Department, and tell us what you got.
Okay, so we've had, we were able to obtain two quotes going back a few weeks, even one of them a few months. I tried at the last minute to shore up two extra bids, just because naturally, I like to have at least three. We reached out to two additional vendors, gave them a few days, emails, voice messages, even something ballpark, and they haven't responded, so the two we do have, one from Astrophysics and one from AutoClear, which AutoClear is currently the machine we have now in place. AutoClear, their unit, their new x-ray machine came in at $17,743. And then Astrophysics, their unit came in, which was, Apple Staples, extremely comparable unit, $19,660. Astrophysics had a five-week lead time, and AutoClear has a two-week lead time, so I'm asking for your approval to proceed with AutoClear, which is the cheaper of the two quotes anyways.
Motion to approve AutoClear for the metal detectors at Valpo Courthouse, $17,743.
Second. We have a motion and a second for AutoClear, $17,743 for a new metal detector at the Valpo Courthouse, all those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. Opposed, same sign. Motion carries.
And then I just wanted to state, too, that managing the courthouse from a facility's perspective, as we've had discussions before, there's, of the 15 facilities in the portfolio, that's by far the toughest to manage due to the age and due to the water issues, and it's really the, the only facility that hasn't seen a massive impact by our work together as a team, and we all knew that over the years, a lot of people wanting new windows and new, you know, the walls are crumbling, but it was, it was prudent, but it was wise that we would have, would have been throwing good money at something bad, the water, the vapor, the moisture issue, so I just really want to say thanks that we're moving forward on some, and I hope the employees and the public are glad the change has come, but yeah, it's, you know, for two years, I've been the one saying, I can't do much, my hands are tied, so it's just refreshing, and I just want to say thanks, and I'm looking forward to what you guys do.
Thanks, Matt. Hold her together till we get there. The cavalry's coming. Next, we have election board, this is Ellis System Equipment Service Agreement, this is the annual maintenance agreement for the two big file units down in their room, so I'll open that, for $1,800.
Motion to approve the annual maintenance Ellis System Equipment Service Agreement at $1,800.
Second. We have a motion and a second for Ellis Systems Equipment Service Agreement, all those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. Opposed, same sign. Motion carries. And that's the end of our agenda. Is there anybody wishing to come forward and speak, address this board? With not, this board stands in recess.